I'm leaving for work, he's coming home.
Hi, everyone, and welcome to the planning board meeting of September 26, 2012. In attendance tonight, we have Matilda Evangelista, Christopher Rich, myself, I'm Harry Lacatelia, and we have Howard Steider, who's our town planner, and Wendy Beaumont, who's taking minutes as the assistant tonight. Without any further ado, I'd like to recognize someone in the audience and go a little bit out of the order of the agenda and go to, what would it be? Let's see. Directly to new businesses, there's no objection.
No objections.
Great, we'll take the first item on the new business. Harmony Lane easements. Frank, come on up.
Mr. Gettle.
How we doing?
Excellent.
Harmony Lane. Frank, what's up?
I don't know if you've been filled in on what happened, but somehow or another, we missed the easements of the planting easement and the electrical easement on lot three. And the attorney has drawn up the easements, wanted you to look at them, make sure everything was up to par, and then we can get the as-built done. Actually, Bob Rosso was the one that found that the easements weren't.
Weren't recorded.
Right.
Turned over to the town, weren't recorded.
Right. So I don't know what happened.
Just so everyone's together, this is Harmony Lane you're talking about. And we're talking about easements along Harmony Lane itself, along the right-of-way?
Yeah.
For the utilities.
Well, it was on the lots. There's a planting easement, ten-foot plant and easement. And lots, it should have been recorded on lots one and three. And actually, lot two, probably two. On those, on their deeds.
Right.
And one house is already sold.
Okay.
And everybody's on board to sign off and all that stuff, so.
Not a big deal.
Right.
And those easements have to be turned over to the town as well?
Yep.
Do you have a copy of the easement?
They're in the packet, I believe all the.
The easement's in there?
Yeah. Under new business.
Howard, have these gone to town council yet?
No. No, I'm just waiting for, Frank said he wanted to come in, he was going to discuss that. And then wanted to understand if the board wanted to add some, any history or knowledge about it. And I was assuming after tonight's meeting that they would be passed on for council for review.
Can I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion by Chris to send the easement documents to town council. Tilly, did I hear a second? Second if I tell you. Any discussion? Any to add? Al Thaddeus?
Aye.
Aye. Is that an aye to it?
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously. Great, we can chip those out to town council. And is there anything else?
No, the update is, we're waiting on the as-built plan, and I gotta still pump out the catch basins and clean them, which I'm working with Dave on that. We figured we're doing the other lot right now, so.
The last one, right?
Yep. So I figured, if this got screwed up, we might as well not be in a hurry.
This is something that definitely should have occurred probably at the onset.
Before a house was sold.
Yeah.
Before a house was sold.
Oh, absolutely, before a house was sold. This should have happened.
With the release of the lots.
Yeah, prior to the release of the lots, absolutely. Yeah, sure.
This is an easement for each lot owner?
Ah, yes.
Okay, have they signed them already?
No, they're waiting to see if you're gonna add anything, and then they'll, my attorney's already talked over.
Everybody's all agreed?
Yes.
Sheriff's attorney Martin Osso.
Yep.
Next guy.
Yep, really.
There was one thing about.
Good attorney.
Yep.
Was there something about a bound or something in Dave's report? A bound missing between the, something about a bound between the town-owned land and a lot that abuts it or something?
In the last review, I don't recall.
Yeah.
Would that have been on like his.
Bound that was missing or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would have been a bound that was missing or something. I seem to recall mentioning there was a bound missing.
I'll call Dave and find out.
Drill it in, throw it in, that way you can show it on the.
As far as I know, they're all in, but.
Oh, okay.
I'll talk to Dave and find out whether he couldn't find it or what happened. I don't know. But we'll find it.
We'll figure it out. Can you follow up on that, Howard?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Go for it.
In the entrance that goes to the trail.
Yep.
Is there one of the packing spaces designated as handicap?
It's just a gravel driveway. I mean, I guess you could put a sign up there or something.
I think it's required by law.
Yeah.
Bear in mind, just.
That's town property.
That's town-owned property.
If you see Peter.
Yeah.
Just remind him nicely that.
Okay.
The handicap guy in town.
Yeah.
I'm also the ADA coordinator, so.
All right, yeah.
If you would be so kind.
Yeah, it should be.
It's not gonna affect it. The easements look fine.
All right, great.
Tilly, anything?
No. I was right.
My only thing was the bound. I always want to make sure that, you know, three times over after the house passes hands, three times, that people in their backyard know where their backyard ends and where the town-owned land begins. And vice versa.
I'll have to talk to Dave.
Vice versa, so that the town doesn't.
I don't remember seeing it in there, but I might have.
Maybe I was reading an old report.
Read it and skipped over.
I was probably reading an old report. Are they all in?
I'll check that, make sure they're all in.
I think some of the confusion might have been that Dave usually frequently looks at the plans themselves per se. And the decision, on the night of the decision, it was voted not to waive the bounds between the town-owned land and any of the privately-owned land. But that would have been in the decision for the certificate of vote.
Because the only other one was, we had the bounds in, and then we had to have the.
Drop it so you could make a sidewalk or something?
No, no, we had to have Bob come out and, you know, mark exactly where they were so we could put the drill holes in. So when he first looked at them, the drill holes weren't in. So I don't know if it was that. I'll talk to Dave and find out.
Yeah, check it out. How it's gonna fall off on that as well. Anything else we do for you?
No, I just wanted to give an update and, you know, say that we are trying to push along, and there was a little mishap on the easements, that's about it. So once we get that.
Pumping the road, brother.
Right.
That's the only thing that went wrong, Frank.
Yeah.
Really?
No kidding. Thanks, Frank.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Wendy, would you let the record show that Bob Watts arrives?
Can we tell them about the six subcommittee seat now chairs?
Yeah, well.
Well, it's nice seeing you guys, too.
Just send them the email, so he stays, sticks around tonight. Bob Watts arrives at, what is that, 7:18? God, you're a good girl. You're good. And we just jumped down on the agenda there, Bob, so that we could accommodate the guests we had here tonight, and that was Harmony Lane easements, so we're taking care of that one, that first step in the new business. We can go back to the regular order of business now.
Mr. Rich.
Yes, Mr. Rich, right on the ball.
I would move that we accept the minutes of Wednesday, September 12th, as a subject for any edits, corrections by any of the other board members.
Is there a second for that?
The minutes that are present at the meeting tonight are updated from the ones you received in your packet, for comments received from.
Comments are included?
Yeah.
Just standard motion, so.
I appreciate it.
The second thing?
That was Tilly. I'll take a moment to review them. Yeah, I went through them originally and sent my comments in, and my understanding is that these are revised to ask for those comments.
Yes.
I have nothing more. Meeting, if the questions being called, is everyone all set with reviewing the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes as presented Wednesday, September 12, 2012? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
For discussion purposes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, discuss away.
I would move that we accept vouchers, I can't find the.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of them.
With the total amount?
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the vouchers.
Do you have the vouchers with you? So I see that what the total is. Cardi, please.
Motion by Chris to accept the vouchers. Total here, what are we looking at? The total is four, eight, five, nine, zero, zero. Check them out. Is there a second for that? To accept the.
I'm trying to find mine.
Session by Chris?
Yeah.
Would have been in the packet.
Forty-eight, fifty-nine.
My only question, yeah, that looks like the one, my only question is the way that bills payable is being filled out here. It looks like they're all coming out of the same account classification, and one of these is a review from.
The M account was changed.
Oh, that's, so we've got the right bills payables now?
That should be in there, right.
Cool, okay.
Great.
No, this is, these are the amounts.
Amounts correct.
Coming from have changed, but those are the totals and the amounts.
So what is, so what is the account classification?
That's all general account of the planning board.
That's our budget. Our budget, the two line items that we would have had at town meeting. This one is incorrectly attributed, I believe, to this one.
BSC group.
Yeah, it was incorrectly.
So why do you do our budget on each one of these, though? It seems to be, isn't it confusing?
Because one is ERSI, which comes out of our budget, that was a budgeted item. And the other is the MVPC, which is a budgeted item out of our budget. And again, this is placed on this bills payable warrant in error, and it belongs on its own individual.
Bills payable from the M account.
Exactly. And that's reflected in those, correct, Chris?
Line item may be in there. It may not be a separate bills payable, but at least the line item is changed.
BSC for three eighty-four is from an M account, M twenty-six forty-nine-two, and the other two are our operating account.
We've got the three eighty-four as the ninety-four thirty-eight.
This is, this has been revised. Chris, can.
This isn't right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, the change has been to this, this number here, which is now reflected as an M account.
That's what I.
Yeah.
Three eighty-four is an M account. The ARC GIS, which is ESRI and Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, for fifteen hundred dollars for my amount, is from the.
That's from our budget as well, right?
From our budget as well.
Yeah, the seventeen fifty-one.
Bob, you following along with what we're saying there?
Yeah, pretty much.
It's a little bit daunting sometimes, the way the money.
Yeah, the chart of accounts is something that I'm not really familiar with, but I appreciate your being diligent, the fact that you do know it. I wanted to ask a question about ESRI. This includes a seven hundred dollar annual maintenance.
For the first year.
For the first year. And what, going forward?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
Per year, yeah.
So it's twenty-two seventy-five for the license, and then seven hundred per year, kind of as a renewal?
Upgrades and maintenance and.
All by itself.
Support.
All upgrades? So if they have an R two point zero?
A ten point two, I believe it includes upgrades for a certain amount of time.
Okay.
Not to interrupt people, but.
That's right.
But let the record show that Tim Howard arrived.
Hey, Tim.
Hey, Chris.
Seven twenty-four.
Well, they don't have, they've got the license as twenty-nine seventy-five.
Discussing the vouchers, Tim.
They didn't break it down.
No, but it's included. And this is being purchased at the state rate, which is cheaper than.
As if we went out of the amount that we had anticipated?
Slightly, not much. The state contract amount is a little bit less than it was last year.
Great.
But if we had gone out and purchased this off the shelf, it certainly would have been a lot more.
Any more questions with regard to the three bills and totaling, what is it, four thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
I just think that it ought to be broken down on the voucher, so that, you know, that doesn't get mixed up. If we're getting seven hundred dollars as part of the twenty-nine seventy-five, then it should indicate the breakdown.
On the voucher?
You don't call this a license when it's not really the whole license rate. Two thousand is the license.
And seven hundred is just this installment.
Or really twenty-two seventy-five.
Twenty-two seventy-five is for the concurrent use license.
Twenty-two seventy-five, okay. See, that should be broken down, I think.
And the seven hundred is for the, the annual. Yeah, the annual maintenance.
So then we have a record pay, that's seven hundred dollars for, in case they come back at us.
Well, if you read, if you read their invoice.
Yeah.
It says the pricing is per a mass state contract. And the purchase of the new ARC GIS license, desktop license, includes twelve months of software maintenance.
Yeah.
It includes twelve months. They don't break it out. It's just included in the price. So the price is twenty-nine seventy-five for the new desktop license, but included therein is.
I understand.
We're purchasing a single item.
And then the maintenance, they're telling you, the estimated annual cost of the maintenance for subsequent years is seven hundred dollars.
Right.
So it's twenty-nine seventy-five to start.
Yeah.
And they're throwing in as a benefits, like if you buy a car with air conditioning.
Right.
You're paying thirty thousand.
I understand that, Chris, but it just, it only says license.
Yeah, well, that part of the.
On that line, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't say with an asterisk, you know, and there's an asterisk here, but there's no asterisk on the money mile.
Perhaps we. No, because, because Tilly, in the license, contained within that license is.
The maintenance.
The one-year maintenance.
Right, I understand that.
It's part of the license, part and parcel of the license.
Okay.
After you get that, you have the option to pay seven hundred a year.
How does it sound? How about we annotate that invoice, and that quotation there in that invoice to specify and break it down?
Yeah.
The numbers aren't gonna change?
No.
The amount of the.
Motion hasn't changed.
But the copy that we'll have for our records will be specified.
Right.
All right.
Yeah.
Any more questions about the voucher? Call the questions, motion to approve vouchers, in total, four thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention, Tim?
Yeah.
Let the record show that the motion carries. Four to zero with one abstention.
Tim Howard is abstaining.
And he's abstaining why?
Because he wasn't here at the beginning of the motion.
That's too much of a discussion.
Yeah, we're into the discussion at that point. Did Bob sign yet?
Chris, aye, it's a second motion.
Only the second? You should have written it up for a third and a fourth. Great. Howard, would you go over the letters and under correspondence for us? Looks like we have five of them there.
Sure, forgot one.
Want a drink of water?
You know, you're a fine American, and that is great, thank you so much. My voice is shot.
There's five letters of correspondence included in your packet, and going from the top, the town of Newbury sent us a legal notice about a public hearing regarding amendments to their use regulations, zoning table and schedule. And of note of this letter is that they are revisiting their zoning regulations to accommodate power generation facilities, which weren't allowed anywhere in town. This is a stopgap measure, and it's until they can get something better established for an electric power generation and distribution in any of the districts. Electric power generation being solar, wind. I talked to the planning member of Newbury, and there's even a possibility of somebody converting a water mill back into a power generation facility.
Oh, neat.
Interesting to think about, especially considering that we don't have anything like that.
Right, and that's why I bring it up.
Looking to put some solar panels up in their backyard. Is it an accessory use? Is it, what is it, is it commercial? What level? Can I just take my farm and put all my solar panels out there? By right, under an agricultural exemption? What can I do? We don't know, we have no bylaw. We might want to look into it. I would should. I think a planner would, dude.
We had that on a list for next, remember? We had a laundry list.
The next letters and coming out of.
I think it's, really, I think it's an important, I think it's an important thing to do.
Absolutely, it should be a very, very high priority for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd avoid a lot of controversy.
Absolutely.
Because it would be contentious.
Last thing you would want would be someone coming in, being forced to go through the ZBA.
Newbury forward had a lot of hoo-ha over.
All the craziness that would ensue, because there's just no guidance for them from town meeting.
There does, that needs, that needs to be a conversation within the town.
And it usually starts here. Oh, it starts over there.
Over there.
Here to there to the tenant. So everyone has a chance to comment.
Yeah.
The next one is town-wide remote participation policy. The Board of Selectmen recently adopted some changes. This is to reflect changes that were recently made to the open meeting law. So everybody should have a look at this and understand the requirements and procedures for remote participation if you're unable to attend a meeting.
That doesn't mean you can call in at an attended meeting in your living room, unless your living room is far away. And one of the things I did note that was slightly different from any guidance that was given by the state, was the fact that our policy, and correct me if I'm wrong, I read through it pretty quickly, but if there is a remote participant, then all votes must be roll-call. Is that true?
Correct.
That's what it says.
Interesting. Any and all votes must be roll-call.
All votes taken during any meeting in which a member participates remotely shall be by roll-call vote.
Interesting, something to note.
Roll-call.
Terribly logical.
But a procedural defect.
A question about this, who makes the call that, and it might be in here, and I might just.
We'll probably have Wendy do it, she has a cell phone.
That it's okay, and I don't mean that call. I mean, who makes the determination?
The chairman of any individual.
The chairman makes the decision. Well, that's, that's in the rules.
Yes, absolutely.
That's true.
And there are certain specific criteria that the chairman, he or she, must go through.
Personal, disability.
The third is issued from the building inspection department. The building inspector recently found motor vehicle repair shop was operating in an IB, and they had not gone through the zoning board process. That was required, a special permit to operate a motor vehicle shop in that zone, so we'll hear from that.
Is that Jerry?
Yeah.
That's Jerry's before he got bounced out of the BP place, right?
Well, he left the BP place.
Okay. I thought it was, BP was a little bit onerous there or something?
No.
At any rate, he's over off of Tenny Street now.
An industrial park, yeah.
Right, in that industrial area.
Yeah, I asked him, I said, how'd you get a permit to move in here? He said, oh, the owner took care of all that. And I said, I doubt it.
You gotta be kidding me.
I hadn't heard anything about it.
I looked it up on the vision.
Doesn't seem like a bad place. It's, what is that, IB over there?
Yes.
And that's not allowed?
And it's no, without a permit, you need a special permit.
For a motor vehicle?
Yeah.
For a repair shop. Seems like a good use.
And remember whether.
That's a special permit from the ZBA?
It says so, it wasn't, it said on the vision statement that that, that part of that building was there since nineteen eighty-nine. So somebody else was using it as that.
No, not as a repair shop.
No, what was it being used for?
Didn't they fabricate steel? So steel fabrication.
No, that's another part of the building. This is just a totally new use for that.
It's not a new building.
It's the ZBA, right?
It's been sitting there since eighty-nine, according to the accessory.
It's ZBA, and this is just a heads up, courtesy notice to us, right?
Right.
Okay, great, what's the next one?
We receive a decision on a use variance petition from the zoning board of appeals. There was a business owner that wanted to move a clock repair shop, being proposed as a retail sales and service, into a residential A, and their application was withdrawn without prejudice, really in brief, because they couldn't prove the criteria of hardship.
Did you get this today?
Pretty tough to do.
It is these days.
It's a pretty tough thing to do if the ZBA is actually, like, reading the law.
The economic development committee should see this and try to, but this is a wonderful use.
They're doing that these days.
This is a wonderful use for the town, I think.
What's that, Tilly?
Clock repair.
Uh-huh. In a residential district?
No, but I think it would be nice for the town, and I think perhaps the economic development committee can find a place to help us, these people. I think it's, this is a rarity, to have somebody repair clocks.
Sure, that's a.
I think they, it was told that it's, and I, business that Georgetown liked, but they were just trying to put it in the wrong area of town.
Maybe he needs some help, you know, to find.
I had mentioned it, he and I spoke briefly a while back before he applied to the ZBA. I'll teach him, I'll tool him again.
Yeah, that would be nice to have. So if anybody has any ideas, even out there, to find a place like this, I mean.
The next is from the zoning board of appeals as well, a decision on special permit that was granted to the Old Bash School of Driving. I believe the board heard briefly about the driving school, because they were wishing to locate into the church, but this location was found for them.
They're behind CVS now or something?
What's that?
They're behind CVS or something?
I believe they're on the second floor of CVS structure.
Cool.
So they were granted their special permit.
Moving right down to, well, let's start with old business. Uh, you want to give us a quick update on the Jewett Street, Hazen Court, Rogers Way, Investigation House?
Uh, through my research, um, a few items in the packet that were provided by Cynthia Bateman are the last two pages where it's a, a plan of Jackman Street dated to nineteen thirty-five as well as, um, somewhat hard to read deed from nineteen eighty-two. The planning office is, is coming to understand that Jackman Street was a street laid out by the county.
County, yeah.
And.
Was Jewett Street as well?
Jewett Street. Yeah, what did I say?
Jackman.
Yeah, Jackman, sorry, Jewett Street.
I'm, I'm presuming that Jackman was as well?
It, it could have been. Um, I, but I didn't look into it.
If you look at the bounds on that road, you probably see that it was. If you follow along, look on the right as you're going out of town, see the bounds.
Long ago.
Still there.
Yeah.
About the bounds?
For, for Jewett Street, being laid out by the county, uh, it was a county road, and I believe in two thousand and six, the county gave up being owners of right of ways and roads. And they, through the act of the legislature, gave county roads over to the town.
Hmm. What year was that?
Two, approximately two thousand and six.
No, that was fairly.
What's that?
I think they did that when Alan was his selectman, so they did that before that. It was said, whatever you found.
So, what, um, that's where I've gone, and basically.
So these would now be town roads?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, it's a town public way.
Town public way.
So I need to find out if there's any, uh, records of the town formerly Saint David County.
Accepting it.
We accept this way.
Right.
Because we need to determine now if it's an accepted road.
Yeah.
Or if it's just an accepted way.
Right.
And then it can, if it's an accepted road, it can be measured and put into, put in our rules for chapter ninety money.
Can I go, can I, um, clarify something?
That would seem to follow, but I would think that we're already getting it. I don't know. That would be a question for Peter Durkey because he's the one that applies for those every year.
To get anything on the official town map, it doesn't have to be accepted. There are private roads.
Mm-hmm.
And private ways on the official town map.
Sure.
Right, absolutely.
So you really don't have to go digging to find out if it's accepted.
Well, what am I gonna, what am I gonna put on the map?
Well, the first thing that I would, I think, and I mentioned that last time it was discussed, I thought maybe town council would look at this one because it's a little different than that Heather Road one. Because Heather Road was a citi-
The A and R?
Was a, no, before, when they put it on the map. That was a citizen petition. If she had come in with a citizen petition, we wouldn't have any other alternative than to put it right to town meeting. I mean, that's how quickly, you know, that, we're, we're responsible for putting it at town meeting, and then they would vote. But because this is a highway issue.
Well, we'd have to hold the hearing then.
Uh, yeah, that's all.
Right, okay. Planning what we're going to be applying to the hearing.
But this one is a little different because there is no deed that has Hazen Court as an address.
Or Rogers.
Or Rogers. And I emailed you what somebody had called me that, that was living around the town at the same time, remember? I sent you and him then.
Tilly, with that being a thought, I think that both Cynthia Bateman, the planning office, the planning board are all accepting the fact that these travel ways aren't called or can be called Hazen Court or Rogers Way because they haven't been named at town meeting as such.
Hmm.
Right?
I don't know who names the streets.
The, the town does, right?
The selectmen would name them.
When we accept them.
We accept them and, and we prove them through.
In a subdivision, I, it's simple, but I don't know.
So what I, what needs to be determined, it's, it's Jewett Street, and when it was accepted by the town from the county, it wasn't renamed because all the properties, as you said, are still, all the addresses are Jewett Street, the deed's state Jewett Street. So the approach I'm taking to this is to clarify if it goes back on town map and it go, I, I want to make sure what, when it goes on town map, that's what it is. I wouldn't want to say, let's put it on town map as a town way and end up finding later on that it's an accepted town street.
So the, the desire, it's so, it's not so much a question of whether it should or should not be put on, it's, it's almost understood that it should be put on. The question is more, how will it be represented once it is put on? What do we put it on as?
And, and I'll even raise the concern that if it's called Jewett Street and Jewett Street goes to Jackman and then Jewett Street picks up again, it, it could be confusing for people to travel through.
That's how it is on the other side.
Right?
Yeah, it, to me, you, you know, when you, when you stop and it runs right into Jackman and then it picks up Jewett to make the right turn over the highway, that's a little.
So, a lot of people. Right, so, um.
So why not do it on the other side?
I, I'm, I'm even trying to think a few steps ahead of that, that if we make, make a recommendation and, and act for it to be put back on the official town map, that we may try to rename those two sections, such either Jewett Road or Jewett Lane or Jewett Court or something to be able to differentiate. And that would have to be a recommendation from the board, so it's.
Or maybe even Hazen Court might work.
Right.
Or Rogers Way.
Rogers Way, but then the problem.
See, that's why I think town council.
After that, is that all these deeds are still for Jewett Street. And so what are the repercussions of renaming that?
That's why I feel more comfortable with town council. I don't see where we have that authority at all to make a decision about the name of the street.
I don't think we're reaching a decision yet, we're still doing investigative work.
Still more investigation, find out.
Well, I don't want to see him wasting his time. After all, he's only on, on our time sheet for three days, really. And, and to me, I would like to see town council question it to him.
To whom?
Look for town council to, to recommend which direction we should be going in, um, and, and whatever he says, if he says, no for it, you need this and that, but surely there must be other issues like this because ninety-five runs all the way down to Boston. You know, there must be other issues, I think, that this firm would be very quick and knowledgeable on, you know, what should we do about it?
It'd be expensive.
Yeah.
Because offhand, I think that Jewett Street, that instead of Hazen Court, it just should be annex or something like that, Jewett, uh, Jewett Annex.
Very well, might end up being.
You know, you know, something.
And I support what you're saying, Tilly, and I, I, I don't think we, at least I personally wouldn't feel comfortable moving, moving forward with any action until town council got a review of it. But I think what's going to happen is if we were to go to town council right now, what most likely would happen is town council would say to Howard, Howard, could you give us some more information? And that very request from town council would cost us money. So I think maybe the, the prudent thing to do at this point is let Howard just.
Just progress a little bit further on, on some information.
Don't dedicate eight hours a day, five days or four days a week to this.
Right.
But as, as you come across information, and it sounds like you're, you're plodding along there at a pretty good rate.
Well, did you read my email that I sent you because I CC'd him?
I, I did, and, and just for the rest of the board, Tilly had sent me an email, and I looked at the nineteen sixty-six.
I don't, just for the record, I don't know what email you're talking about, Tilly. I get a lot of.
About this, about this.
About?
The Hazen Court, that's all I sent.
And in the, the regulations from nineteen sixty-six, it shows Hazen Court and Rogers Way in the street list, but it doesn't show a date where that street was accepted.
It has a note on it.
Right, and, and what I'm saying to you is that I talked to.
That was the blue book you mentioned. I didn't know what you were talking about, blue book.
It has listed here the street, and it has the asterisk with note. And this is the only note I could find because the others didn't, didn't explain the note.
After Hazen Court, it states, see note, and in the beginning of the street list, it says, see note, colon, talk to the town clerk. I went to talk to the town clerk, and she says, we don't have any notes regarding this.
Well, this is.
And she has looked, and she said, it's not uncommon that certain things were lost in the flood or are unable to be located, such as this.
This note, as I had sent you, says Interstate Route ninety-five is the only state highway in Georgetown, and it gives the planning book number eighty-two, or, and, um, number forty-seven, page number seventy-four seven.
One thirty-three and ninety-seven are state highways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the only note that, that's connected to.
Ninety-two.
There's three or four of them. There's Travis Drive, and there's Rogers, and there's, um, Hazen. And, uh, Travis did not, uh, he, he didn't put a sign up, as I noticed. There's no note, he goes by, um, East Main Street is his address. And, you know, you know Rogers, that.
Mm-hmm.
There's no, um, is there a sign there? I don't know.
No. And Hazen Court doesn't have a sign, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, and then, this is an old eighty-two, uh, street listing that I think they used, the register used because Mrs. Higginsey, my, that she gave me, and it lists Hazen Court, and it has only one person registered, Jim Hazen. But that's the only street listing that does list it. So something happened here to eighty-four.
Did you ask?
It's a hay.
Interesting.
Pete Durkey? I mean, he might have some sort of highway.
He, he, he doesn't have any knowledge about it. He, he'll, he'll go down there and occasionally plow, and he, he's had a request from one of the residents on the street to come and fix it, and he's actually waiting to find out if the town owns it or not.
Is there only one resident on there?
No, there's two, there's, uh.
Yeah, but, well.
There's two houses there, and then there's a driveway in the back.
Yeah, it's a really long, long driveway that comes way, way down in the back. But they're, they're both sitting there.
But, but I also, this lady also told me that, uh, Mr., um, Belkin owned the property back of them.
On Rogers, on the, on the east side?
And when the road was, yeah, and when the road was done, ninety-five, that his right-of-way was, wasn't accessible. So he had to take the state to court to grant him a right-of-way. And that right-of-way is on.
It, it's an easement on the Bateman's property.
Right.
And it's a forty.
Twenty, it's a forty foot that they gave him, but that was like a ditch, you know? They gave him another twenty feet. So he's got twenty feet of right-of-way and, um.
Twenty foot wide?
Easement, what's that?
That's, that's a.
Twenty foot wide?
Yeah. Twenty foot wide.
Running along Route ninety-five, evidently.
So that would be a total of sixty, forty would be down in the, the slope, the ditches I guess.
Yeah, I think the twenty is included in the forty-foot easement.
No, it's added, the way I read it, yeah.
All right.
Well, this is all fascinating information, and, um, we're, sounds like we're digging and digging and we're getting there and.
Sure, but I do feel more comfortable.
Keep up with this.
I don't see why the harm wouldn't be just to call town council. And that would be just a phone call and just say, which direction, I, as the planner, you know, maybe he, he'll know like this, you know, or he'll get back to you quickly before you go digging and digging and digging.
It's a five hundred dollar question.
It's a five hundred dollar call.
A telephone call is.
It's a five hundred dollar call with a, with an email, one and a half dollars for this one.
Yeah, telephone calls, two hundred to start.
Maybe, maybe, so you know what? I think what you're saying is absolutely appropriate, but I think it's just a little bit premature, but let's let Howard, I, from my opinion is that we should let Howard look at it just a little bit more, have the benefit of this, what you've given him tonight, a little more information from, from others.
If I may, I think we need more information to formulate our question to town council.
Exactly. Put far more eloquently than I would ever be able to.
I think it's, see it very simply.
Get that legal training.
What, what were the property owners granted? Were they given that authority to name their street? What was the process once the streets were cut in half or divided?
I have one fear.
I think that's the only question.
Right, but my fear is that town council will go beginning to do that research.
And it's going to be very expensive.
Two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Poor money, whatever.
What are you, what are you, back in ninety-two?
Well, what's, what's that, a day's pay? For him? I mean, you know, it's, apples and oranges.
I'd, I'd like to be able to find out more information so I, I become educated and I know how to phrase the question.
Call, call Jack Multry, he'd have all the answers.
Yeah, the name, yeah.
He, he knows, he has all the answers. He has a ton of the old road layouts and stuff, and he had them at his house.
I bet he does.
I don't know if he burned them when he left or what happened.
Well, the, what I'm running into is, is the ability to recall some records and records that past.
But he grew up around here.
Board members have.
I have a question about that.
What's that?
When you have, when you have a chain of, of records and chains are missing, and they're gone, and they don't exist, and you're hoping that somebody remembers, what do you do? I mean, what is the process there? Um, what I'm thinking is that it, it sounds like there's some pretty good ideas of what we want to happen, right? So can we, can we, um, influence the outcome?
Absolutely.
Sure we can.
We just did.
The pitfall is that we failed to investigate as deeply as we could.
Do due diligence.
And the action we're taking.
Yeah, I get it.
Is contrary to what actually did happen. And a lot of this is registry deeds, a lot of this is.
We just did it with the aerial photos that we looked at, and we saw, yep, it looks like there was a street there in nineteen old.
Sure, for the A and R for, uh.
I think it was forty-four.
Well, the thing about it is that.
Distinction without a difference.
The first map, the eighty-four map, wasn't done by Narmack Valley.
Yeah.
That was on a digitized map.
Right.
And that's the one that had Hazen Court on it.
And.
So we don't know how they arrived at.
Numerous other areas.
But I was talking to Gerard, and he said that.
Gerard written from Narmack Valley, county commission.
Yeah, so he said that, as far as he knows, he will put in the map whatever the town tells him to. And what he had done, established the draft map, and Nick was supposed to go back and forth if there was errors or corrections, and he would have accepted Nick's statement. So Nick gave him a list, I guess, of what to put on, and somehow, I don't know how Nick derived from that, if he took this and just figured that if there was a note, it doesn't mean it's a, you know, he didn't know what it was. I don't even know if Nick knew where it was, Hazen Court, but.
Well, that's part of this, to find out if there's a reason why it was taken off, so.
The, but the reason you have to find out first, why was it ever put on the eighty-four one? So you know, if you want to go that far.
Yeah.
Right, there's a lot, there's lots of.
I think what we want to find out.
avenues to pursue on this, so.
That's why I think it's going to take a long time. It's not going to be a quick.
Well, we want to find out is the truth.
Does it really matter what was? Is it not more important to design?
I think the key is.
If you do something wrong.
Not perfect diligence.
Right.
I mean, you look up, you spend a reasonable amount of effort to gather fact finding of what its history was, and then at some point you go land formal, road formerly called Jewett Street prior to the.
Yeah, sure.
Installation of Route ninety-five and then called Hazen Court and now called whatever.
Do a little risk analysis.
Now, when the Heather Road.
I mean, what difference does it really make?
Does anybody think that we've already investigated?
Just call it something and put it on the map, and everybody's happy.
Yeah, well, with the Heather Roads thing, where the citizen petition came in, they did all the research. Coming here like she did, she's dumping it on town's responsibility just because it showed up on the eighty-four map, but we don't even know if that's correct, you know?
How did this get in front of us?
This is a letter.
Cynthia just showed.
One of the residents on the road came in and questioned why it wasn't on the official town map. And, and I'm basically investigating why it's not on the map, but I'm not doing the whole application.
No.
So I'm doing it so I can keep the board properly informed.
And it sounds like you're doing a great job, and, uh, does anybody here think that Howard should stop?
No.
I, I just think it shouldn't be a priority.
But I definitely, I don't think we should go to a lawyer either because I don't think there's any good answers.
Let me find some more and we'll see what I present.
I don't think we know what question to ask yet.
I think that's, that's legitimate.
And even, even so, at some point we just agree that it's Hazen Court and whatever.
But we don't know who's.
That's lateral.
They said it, they said it MVPC that just tell them what name you wanna.
Right, but he, he also, I told him that I thought it should go to town council and he said he thought so too.
Absolutely.
Because he doesn't know if we have that authority as a board to do that, maybe the selectmen.
Well, yeah, we'll just let the selectmen do it.
Before we act.
We'll just, we'll give them our suggestion, well, we'll, no, we'll have done.
Take it.
We'll have found out what rec, what facts we can gather will be gathered and we'll come to what we think is a reasonable solution and.
I know, and that's.
Give it to them and then they say yay, nay, or.
Great.
Whatever.
Go back to the drawing board.
Moving forward, next item on the agenda.
Because why Mr. Chairman doesn't count?
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, Mr. Rich.
I would, my personal opinion, I think before we contact town council, we have to get our ducks in order. Howard should be privy to what the information until he's got there. Sure, we'll bring the hand page at least to archives eventually.
Well, this isn't mine, I, I, somebody else.
I, I have access to that information in the court.
Boundless resources of.
And once we have enough information to. You to draft a coherent, logical question to town council concerning this. We should then discuss it. I don't know if we wanna send it to town council or ask for it.
Okay.
I agree. The other thing is I think Howard should. Know that he has to do that or that, that it would be nice to get that research done, but not make a career out of it. You know, don't let it consume all your time.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Great.
Five minutes a week.
Three.
Three days, that's all we have.
No, five minutes a week.
Oh, oh.
Three minutes a week, oh my goodness.
Five minutes a week.
Okay, uh, next is, uh, under new business, that takes care of old business, new business, we've done how many, lame easements, Stone Row Inspection Report.
Well, you had another correspondence that we didn't know.
Oh, did we, did we miss one? One fifty-four Essex Street Special Permit?
No, something on Lake Shore. Oh, Bradford Loop.
Yeah.
We're, we're not even there yet, Tilly.
Yeah, that's.
I thought this was correspondence.
No, that's under blue sheet, which is a new category, so that.
Where is it here?
We're new business item number two.
We're. We're up here.
Alright.
We're working our way there.
We'll get there.
Stone Row Inspection Report.
The inspection report was attached to BSC Group's invoice that was just approved in the voucher. And a planning board member raised a concern about, um, the report. And, uh, in the, the report. The owner of Stone Row, um, makes a statement that the bounds, um, he believed that all the bounds had been waived in the decision.
Stone Row, right now, okay, Stone Row Extension we're talking about.
And it's a, I don't know where my talking is.
Putting in granite markers for the bounds?
Yeah, well, I, I think the problem here, what, what we're running into is, um, one of the things this board does, we, we do the certificate of vote, we approve the plan, it all goes out, all well and good. And then it starts to get built and as it gets built, we release lots, things go forward and you're in a position of accessing the ad built plan. Those are usually the final checks of the check off list. What happens sometimes is that little anomalies, that things that are not yet done on the subdivisions get picked up by the construction engineer naturally. And what we have here is, is actually a compilation, Dave, Dave Varga seems to have, uh, used, uh, a, a series of boldface and italics. To track along all the back and forth comments that have come back and forth between the, uh, the developer and. And, um, my issue is a lot of times we don't even get these, we don't read them, we don't know what's going on and.
When, when an inspection report comes in, I usually attach it as correspondence to.
Okay, great.
Um.
Sometimes we only see them when we're paying them and then we usually only focus on the amount. One of the things that, and just, just a caveat to the board, is that, um, a lot of times, things will. Be recommended to, uh, be okay or be good enough in spite of the fact, and at the discretion of the.
If, I noticed here, board members.
Even though they may be contrary to what's the plan and decision actually set.
The observer, uh, the reports in, uh, right behind BSC Group's bill, so keep going through the vouchers.
And you only got one page of it?
This guy.
In the PDF, yes, there's another page to that that wasn't sent out. Wendy sent it out though, subsequently. Wendy sent it, sent it out on the separate email.
But to clarify, there, there is a statement made in the observers' report stating that, um.
I have my page two. Do we have page two for, for the, for the board? Copies of page two?
Uh, no, we didn't make copies of page two to.
No, I just sent it out.
We just sent it out.
Let me see those for a second.
I don't think I got it, I did look at one.
No, the first, the first email I sent out, um, I accidentally sent it out without it being attached.
I would does that all the time.
And I sent another one.
Attached.
And it had, and it had typo in it too.
Oh, then I didn't see the other one, that's.
That one came, yeah.
Okay. What's it look like?
Would you like me to grab some?
It sort of looks like the first page, but, you know, it's different.
You got it?
Yeah, I, I printed it up. Actually, we probably have a copy of it in the vouchers there. Correct? Or did that only get the first page?
I see something here for twenty-two cents, what was that?
That's something that we're gonna talk about later.
Um, I was hoping that everyone would have it. Um, it, it seems that there are a number of bounds that aren't being put in. That Dave Varga sort of is, um, and I don't know what authority he has to do this with, but he's, he seems to be waiving them for the board.
He doesn't have the authority.
Um, yeah, and this is something that we, we may wish to discuss with Dave.
He's saying I recommend approval, he's not.
Right.
I don't think he's waiving it. He's just giving his recommendation.
And, but, uh, one of the things that I did see here was that he's under the impression that. Uh, as you may recall, based on the certificate of vote, and this is from the, this is from the developer, as you may recall, based on the certificate of vote, all bounds were waived for this project?
Right, I, I pulled a certificate of vote for the definitive subdivision of Lot fourteen. And the only waiver that was given regarding bounds was, um, street bounds.
Right.
That was only one.
Right, but certainly not, um.
Not all of them.
Yeah. Um, one of the, one of the most important things I saw on the second page and this, this probably falls back, there are a number of, um, issues here.
Signage and bounce.
Yeah, signage that needed to be done, uh, numerous outstanding.
Well, this is dated May seventh, do you think perhaps they've been done?
Well, what you're seeing here is, is a little less than simple to understand. Your, the original date was May seventh. Then it was updated on August twenty-second, below that. And, um, instead of reiterating what, and just breaking out what hasn't been done, Dave is following along and he's, it's actually a good way to track. Myself, I personally like these things in a spreadsheet, but.
So all the dark, uh, printing is the August?
All, uh, th- those are requests.
The italicized, review of August twenty-second is in italics.
Right, that's Dave, but the boldface are requests that are being made by the developer that we've never received under correspondence.
Right.
And Dave is handling them, but we don't see them.
It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
I think I've made my point, maybe we can put this on the agenda for the next week?
Yeah, I think so.
Right, I'm gonna.
With no, uh, with no objection to putting this.
I'm gonna request.
Having Dave here.
Dave Varga to.
Having him here, please.
To, to attend and be prepared to discuss.
Great, and we can chat it all out.
Yeah.
Okay, that'll be the, what, what's that meeting?
At that time, can we have both pages?
Yeah, you can have both pages tomorrow if you'd like.
You got them electronically.
Yeah.
No, we'll resend them. That, no, that should go back with the vouchers, Tilly, please.
I'll use your paper, you can send it to me electronically, I'll read it electronically, buddy.
Uh, well.
Yeah, hard copies.
Have, have copies of them, that's all, when's our next meeting? Oh, I'm sorry.
Two weeks from today.
What is that?
Ten, ten.
Ten, ten.
Ten, ten.
Ten, ten, wow, ten, ten. This will be on the agenda, right? And Dave will be present. Alright. Okay, down, Planning Office, Citizen Planner Training.
Merrimack Valley Planning Commission puts on, uh, a Citizen Planner schedule, um, fall and spring of every year. And I attached, uh, course descriptions and registration information if any of the board members are interested in attending any of the meetings. And, uh, I'm planning on attending, uh, the November fourteenth meeting over at Merrimack Valley concerning special permits and variances.
Great, sounds great. That's good news, September fourteenth, you said?
Right.
Uh, not September fourteen.
There's lots of other ones in here. November fourteen.
Oh, November fourteen. I'm still in September, pardon me, November fourteen.
I completed all these workshops.
Look, it's still in September.
Little certificate.
It's Groundhog Day.
I don't know if you, you can get some credits, you know.
It's a slightly different program than, than in here, but you can, you can, you, you get two bubbles you need to go through.
Yeah.
Good luck with that, let us know how that turns out.
I think it's important.
Are you gonna bring us all your, all your materials and everything or everything you got?
We've got a lot of special permits on our, on our responsibility now. You know, our zoning changes.
Okay, we have to keep up. It's not easy keeping up. Second item, Park and Recreation Special Permit Application Received.
Be still my heart.
Uh, the planning office received and is processing Park and Recs, um, special permit application. For a recreation facility. So at the next meeting, that will all be distributed and I need to get an understanding from the, each board member, what they prefer to have for drawings. Half size or full size or, what have you?
Full size.
Half size.
Yeah, I said full size too.
Full size.
You can't read the small one.
I have good glasses.
Bob, what would you prefer?
You have access to microscopes that work, that's why.
Double size?
That help you?
So that's four full and one half.
Must be the odd man out.
And just, um, so the board understands, uh, the Park and Rec, from my cursory review of it. They're coming for special permit before the board, but they'll need to go in for, uh, before the zoning board because one of the properties is in the floodplain district. So there'll be some involvement here and some of the zoning board, some with CONCON.
Is it simultaneous? Uh, we certainly hope they're gonna do it more or less at the same time.
Right.
It'd be kinda crazy to be.
It'd be smart. I know the zoning board has it for discussion at their next meeting, so. M account for Caribou Court.
Uh-huh, what's up with that? What, they sold it or something?
Jay Barnes Contracting, Jason Barnes Trustee, sold the property and development rights to another party. Uh, after all of the, um, invoices against the M account have been paid, there's an account balance remaining of twenty-two cents. Included in the, the documentation that I presented in the planning packet is proof of a four thousand dollar M account being established by the new owners. Or, uh, any, uh, site inspections or technical review bills that might come in.
So, uh, are we looking to release the twenty-two cents?
You are looking to release twenty-two cents, but, uh, as twenty-two cents is being released back to the town's general fund, it doesn't get processed and a check made for twenty-two cents.
Approximately how much will my taxes go down?
I can't even think about that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So, uh, Mr. Rich.
I'm so moved myself.
Moves to release the total remainder. Of M account two, six, four, nine, four. Is there a second for that?
Uh, before you put the total remainder for that M account, did his four thousand dollars go into the same M account?
No, separate, a new account.
It's a new one, it's a new one, yeah, new number, thank you.
And, and.
Is there a second for that? We might not even have to discuss this, no one's seconding it.
Seconded.
Seconded it. Seconded it by Bob.
Suggest that the motion to be paid twenty-two cents plus any accrued interest that may have.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay.
That's what I meant, that's why I worded it that way instead of cent, the twenty-two cents. With our luck, by the time it all goes through, there'd be an interest payment.
All in favor of releasing the twenty-two cents plus interest?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Great. And that'll be signed as it goes around. Blue sheet, fu- sorry, please?
What was this in here for, the budget summary?
Wendy, to discuss the ERSI.
Will we type these up?
Okay, so are there any questions about?
I'm sorry, what?
Can we type these up?
Where the money is.
Howard just has this thing about my real name, Christopher. Have that come on, these are terribly legal documents and they should have everybody's terribly legal name on them.
Do you want Christopher on it?
Yes.
And actually I should be Robert Ross.
You should be Robert.
Is this good enough for the twenty-two cent rela- release?
I'm not asking for it to be changed, I just would like in the future.
In the future, absolutely, sounds great.
Howard move.
Okay, great. Uh, blue sheet. I like seeing blue sheets. I like that, that's a good move. Thank you.
Do you want me to photocopy them onto blue?
Yeah, that would be.
Very funny.
Okay.
That would be better than all these white sheets, I'll tell you.
I have a Xerox copy of a blue sheet being presented as a white sheet. And the, um, I, I would like to say that the first one on forty-two Bradford is something that town planners.
Like.
Get really excited about because of the unique aspect of it, um, but that's really not true. Forty-two Bradford Loop is, is unique in the sense that it was laid out prior to, uh, adoption of subdivision law. And it remained undeveloped and under the same ownership. In terms of never being, uh, purchased by an adjoining property.
Yep, non-contiguous ownership.
What's that?
Non-contiguous ownership.
Non-contiguous ownership.
So it would, it would be qualified as, under grandfathered lot.
Right.
Grandfathered lot.
And as such, it is allowed to have, uh, the setbacks that, uh, existed in the time that it became non-conforming.
That's correct.
And so what you're seeing is, uh, a blue sheet for, uh, a single family home to be, uh, built on that lot.
Oh, I, I question that last part. If you, if you're building a new structure, you have to conform to today's zoning.
No, you don't.
On the dimensions. Because.
And I mentioned setbacks.
And setbacks.
Setbacks that were in place when the lot became non-conforming.
We never did that before, I don't believe.
It always was, uh.
Do it legally.
It always was sent to the, no, really.
Really?
It was sent to the zoning board. And we would allow a variance for whatever dimensions that, you know, didn't meet today's zoning. So I don't know whether we did it wrong or this is right, you know?
Okay, well, I like to think we did it right, so.
Well, because that's the way we did it.
Well.
Because here.
Bear in mind, what we're looking at right now is, um, is a sign off sheet from the, um, from, uh. Being given to us as a courtesy from the, uh, the building inspector and the building inspector is.
Also the zoning code enforcement officer.
So this is on here just for informational purposes?
Yes.
You didn't actually need to sign off on this, did you?
No.
Good.
Okay.
No, but you could ask him about that, I would ask him because what's going in here is gonna be, um, a thirty by twenty-six single family home. Fifteen, sixty square feet.
Well, the.
Five thousand square feet.
But the lot was fifty by one hundred, so the lot size meets current zoning requirements. And so that's also how it's allowed to, uh, have setbacks that were in place when it became non-conforming.
But the lot today is, is not five thousand square feet.
In that area it is.
No.
Bradford Loop it is.
But, no, it's, um.
It's fifteen thousand because it's, it's, uh.
Not in the grandfathered lot.
No, right.
No, no, but she's, he's just.
If you created that lot today, it would need to be figured out.
She created today.
Right, but it was created in nineteen fifty.
You owned it from a long, long time ago.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but what I'm saying is, the reason I believe, I just, I just told you.
Thirty by twenty-six is a small stretch.
Thirty by twenty, but fifteen hundred square feet, what is it, a high, two-story?
Thirty by twenty-six.
Fifteen hundred and sixty square feet?
That's not that tall, cause thirty, thirty by.
It's two-story.
Right.
Yeah, it's two-story.
Right.
Well, bear in mind that, um, Howard can certainly express his concerns to, to build.
Like a cake.
Right.
And, um, we can move on to the next one.
Well, colonial, because it's probably using the whole side of the floor. The cake doesn't usually use the whole footprint.
Yeah, because if, I can picture if, if you can't address today's, uh, setbacks, then you, by rights, you could have, if the way this is interpreted. You could have a house right up to the edge of a lot.
No, you couldn't. You, you have to have setbacks that were in place when it became non-conforming.
There weren't any.
Yes, there were, Tilly, at some point setbacks were created.
Fifty, there was no zoning.
Right, but in nineteen sixty-six were there setbacks created?
Well, why are you saying sixty-six?
I'm saying when, when the, 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 the property and the, the setbacks that were in place when the property became non-conforming.
Right.
Are the ones he needs to build to. Whether that was in nineteen sixty-six, in seventy-two, fifty-three or fifty-four, when zoning was created. It determined what the setbacks would be for the lot.
Okay, so that's kind of the same as today, I believe.
Can I, can I interrupt you?
That's the same as today. That's the same as today.
Can I interrupt you guys, and this is like so far out of our jurisdiction, I can't even understand why we're discussing it during a planning board meeting. But I mean, it sounds like a really fascinating discussion, maybe you guys could have.
I think we should thank the building inspector for letting us know and move on.
Absolutely, maybe we should move to one seventy-two West Main Street, which might actually be germane and fall into our radar, one seventy-two West.
One seventy-two West Main Street, uh, you're looking at a blue sheet for a new single-family home with an in-law apartment, um, being proposed. And, um, the next page shows a Xerox copy of, uh, the proposed structure, septic, and, uh, the, the limits of the property.
Probably looks real familiar to anybody that was here when we were approving Richardson Lane. That's the corner lot and that's the one that Mr.
Bussin, Bussin kept.
He was looking to have a driveway that exited onto Richardson Lane as opposed to West Main Street. This plan would seem to be West Main Street.
A, as I recall, he and from my, uh, investigation, this builder would be allowed to exit onto Richardson Lane, but he would not be allowed to have a Richardson Lane address.
And why are we seeing a plan that's showing?
Because he's only allowed, when this A and R was created, it was determined they couldn't add a Richardson Lane address, so it's a one seventy-two West Main address. And the builder has decided it's just better to access right onto West Main.
Yeah, I remember when he was before us with that.
I remember walking the property.
Yeah.
But because it's an in-law apartment application, it will be going before the zoning board.
And that's not on per view, that's.
No, that's the D A.
Yeah.
Great, okay, uh, is there anything?
I'd be surprised if they got it.
Is there anything that anyone, uh, would like to bring up?
Yeah, I think this, this is a good idea that we are aware of these.
Absolutely, I really like seeing them.
Right.
Kudos to, kudos to Howard for bringing them to our attention.
Yep.
I'll keep doing it, now that I know you want to see them.
Oh, when they do.
All right.
Excellent, anything anybody else has to bring up or anything, there's an on agenda that you'd like to mention, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ooh. Jeez, I, I, I think you're gonna have to go with the second on that. Motion by Chris Rich.
He had me clearly.
To adjourn.
Christopher Rich.
Not a legal thing.
Careful payback. Second by Tim, all in favor? The eye all closed, the eyes have it, motion carries. Meeting is.
You're not gonna sign it, Tilly?
Oh, would that be?
At, what is that?
Eight twenty-two.
Eight twenty-two. Eight twenty-two P M. Good night, everybody, see you in a couple of weeks.
We missed the record by two minutes.
I know, I blew.